Okay, my, I am so sorry. I am late, or I am tardy to my own party that I invited people to. Um, so yeah, super apologize on that one. Oh, Lord, so if this is your first time joining us, this is Thursday's study session. And um, essentially what study session is, is just um, the aim anyway is to read a book a month. We'll see how that works cuz we only got a week left and we like on page twenty something, so hmm, we shall see. Um, hello, hey girl, hi, how you doing? Or as when you say, how's it going? I'm cracking myself up, don't mind me. So um, the book that um, is profiled this week is this one here, Egyptian Magic. And um, so far, it's, it's been uh, interesting, but it to the point now. Um, where we are in the book, it's, it's kinda, I feel like it's getting into like the entree, the main course, if you will. So um, we're on chapter two, magical stones and amulets. And uh, essentially last week, uh, they were talking about how amulets were used to protect um, people when they passed away and things like that. And um, I got off on one of my many, many tangents, talking about tattoos and um, I wonder if tattoos, or I put out there, I wonder if tattoos could be the equivalent of uh, sacred amulets um, in the modern sense. So incidentally, I think um, so for those of you who don't know, I have two cats. And my one cat, Mofta, is just like being very attentive right now. And she's usually the cat that's like, uh-uh, get away from me, like, I don't like company, I don't like people, but she's being super affectionate right now. Maybe she's feeling this chapter, I don't know, we will see. So alright, so um, we are on page twenty-six, the bottom. So um, I don't know why I'm showing you cuz it's backwards, duh, I don't know why, I didn't just think of that. But um, anyway, so amulets are of two kinds, those which are inscribed with magical formula and those which are not. In the earliest times, formula or prayers were recited over the amulets that were worn by the living or placed on the dead by priest or men set apart to perform religious services by the community. But it was not in the power of every man to employ them. Hmm, that's interesting, I like that fact by itself. Um, and at a comparatively early date, words of magical power and prayers were cut open, I'm sorry, cut upon the amulet, oh, that's hmm, I feel like that gives me even more ammunition to be like tattoos are modern amulets. But I digress, we shall see with more research how that goes. So uh, which thus became uh, possessed of a twofold power. That is to say, the power which was thought to be inherent in the substance of which the amulet was made and that which lay in the words inscribed upon it, which makes sense to me anyways. Uh, the earliest name for the formula found upon amulets is Hekau, which words of power, we understand that already. Um, and it was so necessary for the deceased to be provided with these Hekau or words of power that in the ten-five, sixteenth century BCE. See, look, now the other cat is over here playing. My other cat is Nefratum, and apparently he, he was the one who last week was, was like, hey, I'm here, feed me. So, and tee-hoo, back on topic. So in the sixteenth century BCE and possibly more than a thousand years earlier, a special section. Okay, I went down to read the um, footnote, it basically just kinda cited where he's getting this from. Was inserted in the Perdemharu with the object of causing them to come to him from whomever place they were in. Swifter than greyhounds and quicker than lights, the earliest um, Kometu amulets known are pieces of green. Ooh, I feel, I'm like, one, I feel like I need to turn the music down, it's like way too loud for me. Uh, pardon me real quick, but um, so again, for those who don't know, um, I am a school teacher by day. So um, today we were talking in class and um, I had asked a question and the students were just sitting there like, I'm just like, y'all, we are online, Google it. So um, I was about to give y'all like a low-key, uh, look this up real quick. So look this up real quick, if you could, that'll be helpful, thank you. Um, the word is S-C-H-I-S-T, a green skist. Now, mind you, I know many things, I know a lot of things, I don't know all things. That's like my tagline at work, whenever the kids be like, but you're a teacher now, I'll be like, no, no, no. I didn't ever said I knew everything, I know many things, I know a lot of things, I don't know everything, but Google does. So um, if you know that word, please feel free, put it in, put it in the comments, um, help assist out right now. And then not to mention, um, this is a period book, so it is from originally nineteen oh one. And I recognize that, you know, maybe there are some words that were used back then that aren't necessarily used now. So um, so I'm, if anything, I'll, you know, Google it myself later on. But um, anyway, so the earliest amulets were known as pieces of green skist. Of various shapes, animals and otherwise, which were laid upon the breasts of the deceased. These are found in large numbers in prehistoric or predynastic graves at several places in Kemet. It is most unlikely that they were made by the Aboriginal inhabitants of Kemet. I feel like that's like a whole nother thing to look up, which again, I recognize for nineteen oh one, Egyptologists and racism and xenophobia and all that other stuff is going on, so that's what that sounds like right there, but we will see where he goes with this. For notwithstanding the various conjectures which have been made as to the object and use, it is pretty certain that as MJ DeMorgan said in the book Ethnographic Prehistoric, I'm saying it with the most like Yankee voice ever. That was supposed to be French, I was not trying to put on no French accent. Um, so in that book, it says they belong to the cult. Um, according to this writer, they were used, they were used was exceedingly widespread until the end of the Neolithic period. But with the advent of people who we call, uh, huh huh, okay. I understand, I'm like, where did I put the remote, I've done, turn down the mi- When in doubt, use your brain and your logic. When in doubt, alright, let me, let me cut it out, serious, serious. So um, that is interesting because the um, what we do call the Kometu are the inhabitants, they came from um, southern um, Kemet, AKA, they came from Sudan and moved north um, to settle. So um, that makes sense then, it's not the people who were there before the um, the Kushites um, kinda moved north and um, took over and gave them civilization. Let me stop, I'm like, super oversimplifying, please do not quote me on that, please don't come in the comments be like, uh-uh sis, you said this and historically. I know many things, I don't know all things. So if you know something, or if I just misspeak, please feel free to correct me, it's not that deep, so long as you come respectful, you go with me. So alright, let's, let's move forward without all these disclaimers, so alright, um, they become very, in the subsequent period um, of the animal forms disappear and the place is taken by plaques of the, there goes that word again, skist, rectangular in shape upon which um, are inscribed in rough outline figures of animals, etc. The theory of these objects were intended as uh, wet stones or as slabs upon which to rub down paint will not hold for more reasons because the, the guy, the French guy from the book before. Moreover, in the green stone uh, scarab, which was laid upon the breasts of the deceased in dynastic times, we probably have a survival of the green skist amulet of predynastic times in Kemet, which now I'm like, you know what? Um, I live in Jersey and I know the Met, I wonder if they might have some, or maybe even like the Brooklyn Museum to see what they're looking like, cuz yeah, I could Google it and look at the pictures, but it would be dope to actually see it in person, just saying. So both as regard to the object which it was made and the material, but the custom of writing Hekau or words of power upon the papyrus is almost as old as that of writing them upon stone. And we see um, that from the inscription of walls in the corridors and chambers of the Pyramid of Unas, king of Kemet around BCE thirty-three hundred, that a quote, "book with words of magical powers" was buried with him. Elsewhere, we are told that the book of Teta um, Nasut of Kemet around BCE thirty-two sixty-six had with him, quote, "hath effect upon the heart of the Neturu," end quote. And there is no doubt that the object of every religious text ever written on tomb, stella, amulet, coffin, papyrus, etc. Was to bring the Neturu under the power of the deceased so that he, we're living in twenty twenty-one, or she. Uh, see, look, I look up and I lose my place, sis, what are you doing, come on? He or she might be able to um, compel them to do his or her will. I think that's really oversimplifying it, and again, I understand it's nineteen oh one and Egyptology, yada, yada. Um, but see, again, I, I feel like you're using all of these inscriptions so that you can either, as you traverse, you know, in the afterlife and so on and so forth, that you can be within Maat so that you can be protected as you move through because it's supposed, you know, it's a treacherous journey, it's not, you just die and, and you're just like, yes, I've arrived. Like you have to actually travel there, it's like, I wish I could just wake up and be like, oh, bing, I'm in the shower. Bing, now I'm dressed, bing, now I'm at work, bing, now I'm at Dunkin' Donuts getting a coffee, I don't drink coffee, who am I lying to right now? Getting a tea and a bagel, that's more my speed, talking about coffee. Anyway, like, but it doesn't happen like that, so if it doesn't happen like that in life, I understand where, you know, this is, we're deceased, we've moved on. But it just, it doesn't work like that, you still have to travel to get to judgment, to get to, you know, depending on, you know, when your heart gets weighed, depend, you know, like what, where you actually end up elevating. Uh, or not to, so um, I just think the fact that he's saying is just like, oh, we're just gonna command then the Most High and Most High is just gonna do what we say, I'm like, that is, that just doesn't, to quote my mother, that doesn't jive, like that just doesn't even sound right. Um, because even now, even contemporarily, people don't command, even, you know, even if it's not within the uh, comedic folks, like, you don't just command Most High to do what you want, even if you don't uh, believe that they are divine manifestations. Like, you can't boss around Mother Nature, you could do your best to be in accordance with her, move with her, observe what she doing or he, you know, however you wanna call nature, um, you, you can't do that, you, you work in tandem. So like, uh, that just, that sounds super, mm-mm, not, not right. Alright, so one, the amulet of the heart, and it has the um, the actual uh, glyph for that, which, that's it right there. And it's actual, I mean, to me, it looks like a heart, like, you know, when we see in science class, the little doodles, I'm like, oh yeah, that's kinda like it. Even though I know it's, you know, where they put your heart when they took it out, it's the jar, but for all intensive purposes, to me, it looks like it, or resembles it, reminds me. The heart is not only the seed of power of life, but also the source of both um, good and evil thoughts. And it sometimes typified the conscience. Ooh, get a, get a little more in before you keep talking. It was guarded after death with special care and was mummified separately. And then with the lungs, ha, was preserved in a jar which was placed under the protection of the um, Neturu uh, Duamataf, or Tuamataf, as he has written here. Uh, its preservation was considered to be of such importance that a text, and then he gives it, chapter twenty-five, entitled, "The Chapter of Giving the Heart to the Deceased", um, was introduced into the Perdemharu at an early period uh, with the viewing of providing the deceased with a heart in the place of which had been removed in the process of mummification. So before I even go ahead and read that, I think that's so interesting, like, growing up, um, I grew up in the United States, I grew up in Jersey. Um, you know, I, I haven't been to that, that, that many funerals, but um, it's just so interesting when we think about um, being an actor and being involved in um, the process of the deceased. And um, I know growing up, it was just kinda like, you know, write the obituary, say your condolences, send some money, make some food and bring it over, um, say some prayers, you know, pick out the clothes, go to the funeral, like, it's very removed. So I think that this whole idea of um, giving the heart to the deceased is like, and again, I understand like the family wouldn't necessarily do this, uh, or, you know, but it's just this idea of, it, it's, to me, it's just such a connection that I don't see now um, in contemporary society. So I, I just think that's so beautiful. Um, and then on top of that, the idea going backwards says, "Your heart is the source of both good and evil thoughts." So hence, like, that is why your heart gets weighed. Um, and in, you know, in Western society, it's your mind, your mind is where those things come from. So um, in other cultures, I know, like, it's your gut, you know, you, you're, like, that's where those things come from. So it's just interesting, the, the view of that, but then also the idea of when you feel guilt, like, it's always in the form of an emotion and your heart is like the symbol of kinda like your emotions and things like that. So it, it's just that coming together is just so interesting to me and how they explain things and how much more sense it makes versus like what I learned in school, like, you, you learn in science class, like, your brain does this, your heart does it. Like, it's so disconnected, so to read this way of explaining, it's like, oh, that makes so much more sense to me, so that. Alright, so the text reads, "May my heart be with me in the house of hearts. May my breast be with me in the house of hearts. May my heart be with me and may it rest there, or I shall not eat of the cakes of Assar in the eastern side of the lake of flowers. Neither shall I have a boat wherein to go down the Happy or Nile, nor another wherein to go up, nor shall I be able to sail down the Happy with thee. May my mouth be given to me that I may speak therewith and may two leg, and my two legs to walk therewith and my two hands and arms to overthrow my foe. May the doors of heaven be open unto me. May Seb, the prince of the Neturu, open wide his two jaws unto me. May he open my two eyes which are blindfolded. May he cause me to stretch apart my two legs which are bound together. And may Empu make my thighs to be firm so that I may stand upon them. May the Natert Sakhet make me to rise so that I may ascend into heaven. And may that which I command in the house of the Ka of Pata be done. I shall understand with my heart, I shall gain the mastery over my heart. I shall gain the mastery over my two hands. I shall gain the mastery over my legs, I shall have the power to do whatsoever my Ka pleaseth. My soul shall not be fettered to my body at the gates of the underworld or the Duat, but I shall enter in and come forth in peace." Okay, I'm done, I'm, I'm done making faces, alright, so, oh my gosh. And I'm like, I, I wanna keep going, but again, it's just, I read this other book and I know it's not just like, oh, that's not conscious. Oh, it's a cursed word. Um, but again, I, I try to be even keel, so I read this book a while ago um, called The Art of Not Giving a Fuck. And um, you know, cuz just sometimes we care too much or we, you know, it, it's just a lot. And there's the last chapter in that book and it talks about death and it talks about um, trying to understand it, trying to make peace with it because it is an inevitable, and, and it's just like, after reading that, it really kind of shifted how I look at it. Because you know, we hear all these platitudes again about, you know, when people pass away and things like that. And, oh, they're in a better place and, oh, you know, it doesn't feel like they're in a better place. It doesn't feel like they're at peace, it doesn't, and sometimes it does, I'm not gonna lie, like, sometimes it does. Um, but when I'm in my human area, when I'm all up in, in my head and in my feelings and my emotions and I'm experiencing my humanity, the loss of my own humanity, I don't wanna hear none of that. Like, save the cliche, um, I'm angry, I'm upset, I'm sad, I'm depressed, I'm, you know, whatever. And that's fine, that, you know, that, all that's part of that, you know, normal grieving process, but um, it's just this idea, again, like I said, they were so disconnected, it's such a, it's not necessarily a taboo, but as soon as you bring up death with a person, the first thing, oh, don't say that. Like, I'm not saying I'm, I want this to happen or, or anything like that, but it's kinda like, as soon as you bring up the topic, people quickly wanna shut it down cuz it's uncomfortable or it brings up other things and, and, and I understand that. Um, but after reading something like this, it's, it's like the, and perhaps it's with other um, spiritual systems too, I can only speak on what I know. But as a comedic practitioner, the way death is treated and it's like, again, you're involved. It's not something that you just observe, but you know, even after, you know, this text and you go through this whole ceremony, this whole ritual, you put amulets on your loved one, you have amulets, put on your loved one to, and you say these things to them or you recite these things, or you have the priests recite these things and, and it's saying like, yeah, again, and it's that African idea of you, you don't really die so long as we remember you, so long as we pour libation, so long as we call your name, you, you're never, you're an ancestor, but you're not gone. And it's um, you know, I, I struggle talking about that with some people, you know, because they don't look at it that way. And um, but it's just so empowering, like, I even remember, I think, I don't remember if I talked about it on here, but in um, November, I, because November, the fall season, that's supposed to be the time of like reconciliation. So I had it in my mind that I wanna do this thing now, every fall season, um, to go to the cemetery and to pay respects and, and talk to all my different ancestors um, who's passed away, uh, passed away. And um, I kinda wish I read, I had read this before I did that, but I mean, you know, every year is gonna be something bigger and better um, in my practice as I grow. Um, but it was just so amazing, like, lighting the incense, laying flowers, pouring the libation, talking to them. Um, and it's so interesting cuz I got my mom to go with me and I got my dad to go with me for um, you know, at different times because um, unfortunately, the first time I wanted to go was raining, the second time it was windy as all get out. And then the third time I said, I gotta get this finished before the end of the Gregorian, the calendar year. So we went and it was just so amazing watching my parents, and both of my parents are Christian. So it was just so interesting watching them kinda following my lead and um, just kinda participating in it and saying prayers and, and uh, things like that and talking to um, you know, our family members. And um, my, my mom had said one thing where she's just like, that was just so beautiful, that was so beautiful, all those words you said. I don't know what you were saying, but it was just so beautiful and you know, I know they heard you. And I was just like, wow, that like blew me away and I'm very thankful for my parents because um, through my, my spiritual journey, they've been very like open and supportive and understanding and I know other people are just like, their family member, like, shut it down. What you said, you didn't say nothing about, just shut it down. You, you didn't say nothing about that, shut it down, so my parents are like, you know, I mean, my mom was like a super hippie. My mom always tells me, um, cuz I was born in the eighties, and she was like, I read this Jane Fonda book and, you know, when I was pregnant with you and she said in there like, I'm, you know, that I am, I am not your owner. I, I just help you and I guide you, you know, you're just a child of the universe and I'm just supposed to like watch over you and guide you. And I'm like, if that ain't the most hippie behind thing I've heard. But it's just amazing that like my mom thought like that, so going through, going to the cemetery and then she even said like, you know, the next time you do this, I wanna come. And then when it was my dad and um, I was like, I had said to him, I was like, well, what do you think about us coming out here maybe once a season to like, you know, say prayers, lay incense, clean off the um, uh, the gravestones and stuff like that. And he was like, super like cool with it, he was like, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, the seventh, the third. Um, so I was very thankful and, but throughout that whole experience, it was just like, going and talking to them, going and giving to them, even though they're not still physically here, was just such, um, it's hard to put it into words. Like, it was, it was, oof, like, oh gosh, I really wish I could, I, I could be uh, more articulate about that, but it was just amazing how much love I felt, not, and respect I felt. And um, I know they say like when you do ancestor work, like you wanna make sure that you don't call in uh, ancestors who were maybe of Isfet or like, you know, they weren't really uh, positive or they were, they weren't exactly doing good things while they were here on earths. But um, for their two, my two cousins, um, one passed away, he didn't, he wasn't, he didn't pass away. He was killed by the cops in New York back in nineteen ninety-five or six. And um, so he, he died very traumatically and um, his brother also died very, and he was there when um, my first cousin um, was killed. And um, since that, he was like super, like traumatized and just after that, he was never the same. And um, then he ended up dying tragically, so um, when I went and I poured libations for them and I said prayers for them, it was just like, kinda like, it, it felt almost like pouring water in the desert, but at the same time, I was like, you know what, if I keep doing this, you know, ma, even, maybe I can give them enough energy and send them enough love and healing that wherever their spirit is now, that it can be fed and move and elevate up. And it just felt really good to be able to participate and be able to give that to them and pray, and pray for them to actually be at peace, cuz we always say like, RIP, rest in peace, rest in peace. But if we don't do anything, you know what I mean, like, yes, we are individuals in the seventh, the third, but we're also our brothers, our sisters, our family keeper. Yes, we are individuals in the sun and third, but we're also our brothers, our sisters, our family keeper. So if you're not doing anything to kinda help them get there and you're just like, oh, like, you know, you dead. We buried you and and just kinda forget about you. How will they ever elevate if we just forget them and let them disappear? So anyways, to get back on point, um, that's why I really like this specific prayer because it's talking about like. Giving them their heart back. Even as y- you know, they were both very flawed individuals, but understanding. What their life was like and what they went through and then how they died in that tra- those very traumatic ways. I was able to give them their heart back like the, okay, now they can kinda move on, move forward. Kind of a thing and it felt really good to be able to participate in that, so um. All of that is to say. Hopefully, hopefully, what I're about, what I'm about to read from Budge doesn't go like. And what everything Minette just said was totally wrong. She is totally off base. That would be so horrible, oh my god. Alright. When this, when the deceased had uttered these words, it was believed that he or she would at once obtain the powers which he or s- she. Wish to possess in the next world and when he or she had gained the mastery over his or her own heart. The heart or the double and the soul had the power to go where they wished and to do what they pleased. The mention of the Netter Pata and his consort's uh Seket. I'm like, I'm reading that, but Pata's consort is Sekmet. Oh, I was thinking Sercat. Cuz of the way it's spelled, so I'm gonna say that Sekmet because that's Pata's consort. So I don't, uh anyway, whatever, continue. Um, it indicates that the chapter was the work of um the priests of Memphis, oh, I I. I need to definitely brush up on that cuz I always forget like where is Memphis? And not the one in Tennessee, y'all. Um, but what that is in um. In Ronnie Kemet, not in Greek. And I always forget it. So, and that the ideas embodied in it are of great antiquity. According to the Papyrus of, oh, I always hate when they do this. They split the name and put a hyphen and I gotta go back and forth. Neck to. Neck. Neck to Amen. I really, I really do hate that, that grinds my gears so bad. So anyway, uh neck to Amen, the amulet of the heart, which is referred to in the above chapter. Was to be made of lapis and there was no doubt that this stone was believed to possess certain qualities. Which were beneficial to those who wore it. Um, so shout out to everybody who's just like, oh, crystals. Like, no, they actually. It's more than they're just pretty and sparkly. Um, so anyway, possesses certain qualities which were beneficial to those who wore it. AKA, something Minette needs to research, what exactly, what certain qualities is he talking about? So, let's see. It will also, uh, it will also be remembered that according to one tradition, the text of the. Lord have mercy. I don't remember, what is the L in uh Roman numerals? I don't even remem- I just knew up to the X, so when they get to the L and the M and all of those, I don't know what those stand for. But anyway, L plus. Fourteen. So fourteen, L fourteen. That chapter of the Book of the Pertemharu was found written in the letters of Lapis Lazuli in the reign of. Heps T, King of, King, listen to me, Nasut of Kemet about BCE forty three hundred. And the way in which the fact is mentioned in the rubric of the chapter proves the special importance it was attached to. And then he has this like um. That's the visual that he gives. Now, Minette is being a dirty birdy. I know you saw what. What I'm being a dirty birdy about, but I'm not gonna show it again. Sorry, okay. Let's back, back to being studious. Alright, so it is a picture of Nefir. Ubineph, a priest guarding his heart against the destroyer of hearts. I'm like, I'm gonna be honest, I've never seen a Netaru that was. Having an interlude in the nude with a tail, a knife. I don't know if he, I I'm literally never seen, thank you, fifty. So fif-. What did I say, ten, fourteen, fifty, so sixty-fourth chapter. Thank you, air high five, thank you. Not out here slipping. Yeah, so. Definitely gotta see, who is this, it says the destroyer of hearts. And I was like, the the only destroyer of hearts is is Ammit who eats your heart during judgment. But the destroyer of hearts, so. Minette is on it, I gotta Google it and find out what that is, I actually, you know what, I'm gonna look it up and I'll post it tomorrow on my feed. So. It will make sense. But although a heart may be given uh to a man by means of the above chapter. It was necessary for the deceased to take the greatest care that it was not carried off from him or her by a monster. Who was part man and part beast, AKA this dude having an interlude in the nude. Um, who went about seeking for the hearts to carry them away. To prevent such a calamity no less than uh seven chapters of the book. Uh, the Pertemharu. And then he lists all of them and I'm not gonna sit here and read all those XIVs to y'all. Let me show you while I'm laughing. All of them, I was like XXXB. See, look. Were written, um, da 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 da, so the chapter was connected with the heart amulet. Made of a white semi-transparent stone, a white semi-transparent stone. I don't know why I literally just thought alabaster and alabaster is not, you cannot see through that. I know selenite, but no, that don't, sir. This cat is just trying to get on my nerves. He's trying to mess with the lights, he literally just opened his mouth to try to bite one. The pains of being a fur mother. Alright, I'm done. Anyway, let me get my stuff together, okay, semi-transparent, that's what it was, um, not onyx, it was some, it's one that starts with a O, I'm trying to think of. I don't know why I can't think of it right now. Um, is what I'm thinking. And the reason why is bec- um, I know you, they've had those little like mortar. Um, things like that where you grind in it and they have, they have them a lot, a lot of offering cups are also made out of it. But it's like white and it has like, uh, it's white and off-white and has like banding. Uh, maybe moonstone, moonstone is kinda transparentish. Uh, I'm like, I would have to give, give that more thought and especially like, well, what would they have had access to also back then? To be semi-transparent and white. I feel like Budge is challenging me. And he's just like, oh, I'm gonna throw this stuff at you and you don't know what it is, so I'm gonna send you on a wild Google goose chase. Challenge accepted. Challenge accepted, I'm the, I'm very okay with that. Alright, I'm done. Back on topic. Hail ye who carry away hearts. Hail ye who steal hearts and make the heart of a man to go through its transformations according to its deeds. Let not what he hath done harm him before you. Homage to you, oh ye lords of eternity, ye possessors of every lastingness. Take ye not this heart of Assar into your grasp. And cause ye not words of evil to spring up against it. For it is the heart of Assar and it belongeth unto him of many names. The mighty one whose words are his limbs and who sendeth forth his heart to dwell in his body. The heart of Assar is triumphant and it is made new before the Netaru. He hath gained power over it and he hath not been judged according to what he hath done. He hath gotten power over his own members. His heart obeyeth him and he is a lord thereof. It is in his body and it shall never fall away therefrom. I Assar victorious in peace and triumphant in the beauty, beautiful Amenta. And on the mountain of eternity bid thee, oh heart, to be obedient unto me in the Duat. Um, so just as a side note, when it says I Assar, anytime that it says um. And it like, there's Assar, the actual Netaru which is not out here, he's in the other room, actually, now that I think of it. Um, also known as Osiris, if we wanna use the Greek. I'm done. I just caught what I looked like when I did that. So, um, but when you pass away, you were also seen as an Assar, like. Uh, how can I, the the simplest way of saying it is like. Everything, when we read the story of Assar and what he had to go through, it's kinda like a template of every other person, like. We have times in our lives where we F up, we have times in our lives where we do some stuff, we ain't had no business. We got ti- times in our life where we are. Um, super in our own ego, we think, we think our stuff don't stink. All of that and um. You know, but when he passed away. All of that kinda melted away and not melted away per se, but like. It all came for a bigger and larger purpose because he kinda was able to regather himself and become his like uh. I wanna say his holy self. Or like, uh, an easier way to say would be like the version of yourself that you see in your head. So even when you you F'd up and you're this and you're that, you're like, but I'm still a good person. Uh, that's true. Everybody is still a good person, like, okay, you may mess up and you may do this and you may do that. Now granted, if you make it a a habit, yeah, maybe that might reflect on your character. But generally speaking, just because we make mistakes, just because. Um, we go through certain experiences, just because sometimes we're the toxic people to other people. Um. We still have that, like, once we pass away. Those kinda human things melt away, so it's only us. And only like the version of ourselves where we have nothing. No other option but to be great, now you could do it before you pass away. That would be lovely, great and stupendous if you did. Um. But um, it's kinda like a a play, an even playing ground and again, this is like. All my way of explaining it, um, just because this is what makes sense to me. Like, this is how I would explain it, um. So when we say after a person passes away, they are their Assar, they are in their like. Best form, they're, you know, stripped away from all of the garbage that we kind of accumulate in our lives here on earth. So. Hmm, hopefully that made sense. So another chapter was connected with the heart amulet made of carnelian, which like, duh. There's like, so any, go to any museum, the Kometu always use definitely, carnelian turquoise lapis. Uh, I know they use Libyan desert glass, um. Sodalite, like, uh, what is it, starts with M, M M M M, it's green, malachite. They, you know, there are a whole of these different ones, so it's just interesting, like when I'm actually reading, I'm like, oh. Look at that. Everything's falling into place. So anyway, antihoo. Um, with a heart amulet made of carnelian, of which so many examples may be found in large museums. The text reads, I am the Benu, so if you've never seen the, is there a picture of the Benu in here, I don't think so. It's a picture of the, I guess, it's like the ibis bird, it's usually white. And then he has like a hat on, but it's, it's a pure animal form, it's not where it has the human body and the ibis head. Cuz that would be Jihudi and. But um, yeah, so. The Benu. Um, the soul of Ra. And the guide of the Netaru who are in the Duat or the underworld. Their divine souls came forth upon the earth to do the will of their doubles. Let therefore the soul of Assar come forth to do the will of his double. So it, like, again, my interpretation is this idea of like, your human self that goes through all of this and then the other one is like. You know, your best self, your spiritual self, your godly self, your soul, if you will. Um, any of those kinda synonyms, even though I know that there's another word for soul. Um, like I said, it's just that's. Because I grew up speaking English, that's the easiest way for me to explain it. Um. So, do 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 do, the will of the doubles, let therefore the soul of the Assar come forth to do the will of his double. The Benu was also the soul of Assar and thus the amulet thought. I'm sorry, brought with it the protection of both Assar and Ra. Hmm, that's interesting. Oh, I'm like, I'm like so getting into my own brain, I'm sorry, I'm like having a whole inner dialogue right now. The Benu was the soul of Assar and thus the amulet brought with it the protection of both Assar and Ra. Oh, so what's making me um kinda go, hmm, is this idea of when I think about the different qualities of Assar. And I'm saying just the purely like positive um qualities. And the positive qualities of Ra. That is ridiculously freaking powerful. And again, this is all in depth, like this is all like, your heart, so I'm even thinking like. Now, as someone who um is in the twenty-first century and yes, no, I'm I'm not deceased, clearly, I'm. Very alive. But um. I'm wondering as, like, you know, like, as we go through life and we have like these heartaches. And these things that we go through. I wonder if wearing some of these amulets or like, I I when I say amulet, I literally am talking about like wearing a necklace. Like, let's be clear, I'm I'm being like overly simple right now. Wearing a necklace of like, not just carnelian, but maybe as it says, having that inscription on it or perhaps having. Um, a necklace with the Benu bird on it with carnelian in it or something like that to kind of like. That, again, that protection of Ra and Assar, cuz uh Assar is like, you know. He was the king, he was what bought civilization. He, you know, like, um, I'm trying to think of like who I could equate him almost to in human terms. Right now and. That kinda sucks that I can't think of anybody. Oh, I don't even know if that would be a a good comparison, the fir- the only person I could really think of would be like a a Chadwick Boseman. Like, how much respect he garnered, like, how, like, y- you know, like, just the qualities, like, when I think of an Assar. I would have to give that even more thought cuz I'm just kinda like thinking off the top of my head, but I'm like, ah. Kind of, maybe, maybe in that direction. Um, cuz again, it's about that like regality, about good decision-making, about, cuz again. Assar did all that negative stuff because he was in his humanness. Um, you know, just like all of us, we got our higher selves and then we got our, we don't make that good decision, F it. You only live once. Like, we all do that, so. But when I think of like the positive attributes, like that, that's why I'm like, okay, kinda, so like a Chadwick Boseman and then like Ra. Ra is like. He's what makes things go, he is that. Hidden, n- not quite hidden, cuz that would be more like a Amen, but. He shines bright, he gives life, he kind of, he's, to me, the way I always see him is like a. An old-fashioned grandfather, if you will, like, I always picture Ra as like. You know, he's that strong, silent type, but he, you know how they have that, that. You know how they have that that archetype of like big mama and she keeps the whole family together? Like Ra is like the male version of that where it's like. Oh, you need some money? Go see Ra, he'll take care of you. Oh, you you know, you you messing up? He'll illuminate and help you figure that out or oh, he you know, like he'll come up with some creative way like. He creates, he makes things happen, but he's not all in your face with it. All the time, sometimes he can be. Sometimes he he gonna respect me. But um, so to put those two energies together and again like. Yes, we do that for when people pass away, but as a lit person who's still alive, how can we use that kinda like? That kind of amulet to and again. You like the way um, the way Budge says things, it's like, you know, if I wear this necklace, it's magically gonna make things going away. Like no, um, just like again, me with tattoos. It's a visual reminder. So if I'm constantly seeing this necklace, if I'm constantly seeing this tattoo, if I'm constantly seeing these bracelets, it's like. Oh, this is what I'm working on. Oh, this is what I'm supposed to be doing. Oh, I am protected or oh, this is, you know, like it's a kind, I'm a visual learner. So when I see it and I'm constantly reminded. It's it's kinda like, it just kinda helps open the way and and makes life. Easy breezy, just coast. Let me stop, not that, it's not always that easy. I wish it was though. I wish I could just put on some jewelry and just be like, oh, life is perfect. Ah, and like literally that's it with no work involved, but we all know that. That's not how life works, so. Anyway, back, back on topic. But of all the chapters which related to the heart, the most popular among the commit to you was. That which is commonly known as thirty B. And its importance from a religious point of view cannot be overstated. Ooh. I like where this is going. The antiquity of the chapter is. Undoubted for according to the Papyrus of New. From the British Museum number ten thousand four hundred and seventy seven sheet thirteen. Specific, that's also cause he worked for the British Museum. He's like, come to our museum, come support us. Anyways. Um, a document of the early part of the, oh, now I gotta count again. Ten, five, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, Eighteenth Dynasty. It dates from the time of Hepseti. Nasud of Kemet about BCE forty three hundred and it seems that it formed a pendant or supplement. To the, what did we say, early fifty sixty? Sixty fourth chapter which professed to give the substance of all the quote. Chapters of coming forth by day end quote in a single chapter. In the rubric to the longer version of the chapter given in the same Papyrus. Number three, so sheet twenty one as opposed to sheet thirteen. Um, chapter thirty B is connected with Haru Tatef. The son of Kufu, uh, also known as Chiops. A man framed famed for wisdom. Uh, it is there ordered that the words of it be recited over a. Hard green stone uh, caper or s- like the scarab. Which shall be laid on the breasts of the deceased where the heart would ordinarily be. This amulet would then perform for him. The opening of the, I skipped a page by accident. Of the mouth, oh, okay. So the opening of the mouth for the words of the chapter would indeed be Hakau or words of power. From reciting the words of the chapter over the caper to engraving them upon it. But a step and this step was taken as early as the fourth uh, dynasty, the text is as follows. So specific. My heart, my mother, my heart, my mother. My heart whereby I came into being. May not stand up to oppose me at my judgment. May there be no opposition to me in the presence of the sovereign princes. May there be no parting of thee from me in the presence of him that keepeth the balance. Thou art my double Ka, the dweller in my body. The god Kenemu who knitted and strengthened my limbs. Mayst thou come forth into the place of happiness whether we go. May the. Shenet who form. The conditions of the lives of men not make my name to stink. Ooh, so many things I could say. Let it be satisfactory unto us and let the listening be satisfactory unto us. And let there be joy of heart into uh, unto us. As the weighing of words. Let not that which be false be uttered against me before the great nature, the lord of Eminet. I'm in tet, my bad. Verily, how great. How great shalt thou be when thou riseth in triumph? I'm like, there's literally just one part that I'm just like, ooh. I like that part. So exciting. Okay, uh, we're we're like going back, I'm trying to find it. Form the conditions of which the lives of men not make my name to stink. And basic, so anyway, the part that I like, cause I'm I remember it in English without just reciting it again. But the part where essentially it says, um, don't let my heart betray me. And it's kinda like. When I hear that, I think of like your conscience and when you doing some mess and your conscious like, you know. You know, you enough, right? Like, you know, you. So that's like, oh, my heart's betraying me, my my heart is like. Like, get it together. So um, even in death though, so it's kinda like when you're, you know, because every day we're judging ourselves. Our boss is judging us, our mate is judging us, our children are judging us, our friends are judging us. Even though when people say, I don't judge, yes, you do, everybody does, even if it's a split second, even if it's a nice judgment. Even if it's a, oh, well, that's a read. It it doesn't matter, we're always judging, we're human beings, this is what we do. Um, we judge ourselves. I mean, if nobody else judges us, we judge ourselves. And so it's this idea of you go through all of life and you have to like. Traverse all of these judgments and you know, your heart be telling you like, yo, get it together or yo. That's a good thing or no, don't do that. And could you imagine being at the final judgment, the final judgment and your heart is like. Looking at you like, what is that meme, the one where the guy's like? Could you imagine if your heart did that to you at the fi- like literally? What? So what it's saying like, please don't let my heart uh, like. Don't let it judge me, don't let it deceive me, don't let it rat me out because. Like I'm, I don't know about y'all, I don't have a poker face, so I'm gonna be sitting there like. I'll be sitting in front of Assar, we're like reading the forty two, like I did not, I did not, I did not. And then I'm gonna be sitting there like. Cause I know in my mind, my heart knows. That I'm telling some bull. Or my heart would be like, hmm, and this, and I do this, and I do this, and I'm good, I'm good, I'm good. So you're always gonna rat yourself out. I said that to one of my students two weeks ago. I was like, don't nobody lie to you. Everybody shows you who they are all the time and we just think we're really good at hiding it. We're not, we're really crappy at hide, even even if you don't talk. You. Some people are not as as um. Hidden as they think they are and even shoot, if it's not to other people, it's to ourselves. So let my heart not. Not to um, sell me out if you will. And then what's the other part that I liked um? Who forms the conditions of life and men make my name not make my name to sink, stink. Let it be satisfactory unto us and let the listening be satisfactory unto us, so AKA. What is being said here? Don't be a liar. Don't be a poopy person. Try to actually do the right thing, stop being selfish. Stop calling names, stop being petty. Stop showing your body parts to everybody with eyes. Even blind people, stop showing your body parts. How about uh, we try to exercise a little integrity? How about we try to, you know, and it's funny, cause I said that to my friend. She was like, what if I don't wanna be a better person? I said, then we not friends no more. I don't know what. I don't know what you're talking about. That doesn't make any sense. But again, it's this idea like. You know, as much as we wanna say, oh, I should be at like this America, I could do what I want. I could be who I want, I could say what I want, I could wear what I want. You will get a reputation for exactly what you're doing, so and people are going to. Uh, like now we have cancel culture, so you can't do everything you want, cause you will be uh, canceled. Like you can't do everything you want because you're gonna lose your job, you're going to, your name is going to be made to stink. And um. You know, maybe now in twenty twenty one, people are going a little overboard with it because you know, people have been. Um, able to get away with things and we're we're at a time in history where we're tired. And I I say this on so many different levels, whether it be your class, whether it be your race, whether it be your gender, whether it be your. Uh, orientation, whether it be your ethnicity, whether it be your language group, whether it be your religion, whether like whatever it is, whatever it is. Whatever your labels are and you know, I don't label myself. Yes, you do, cause now you one of them people who don't like to label themselves, like cut it out. Calm it down, simmer down. So I'm having fun. I don't know if y'all could tell, I'm having fun. So anyway, because a- again, at the end of the day. You know what you doing. You see yourself. You, so again. If your name is being made to stink, you might be doing something that maybe you got no business doing and then when it comes to judgment. Then your heart is gonna betray you and be like. Shouldn't have did, told you shouldn't have did it. And now you gotta come back to earth and do it all over again. Come be reincarnated, cause you F'd up. Cause you was too busy doing what you wanted to do. Oh, my gosh, alright, so um. I'm like, wait, let me, let me look at the time. Let me look at the time, where are we? Alright, so. I'm almost finished with this chapter, so I'm gonna finish this chapter and then we're gonna go into the uh, the next type of amulet um, next week. So it was in this chapter which the deceased uh, recited when he was he or she. He or she. Don't cancel me, I said both genders. Or they, cause it's twenty twenty one. He, she, or they. What are your pronouns? I'm done, I'm be- I'm being facetious. And I'm not gonna touch that with a with a twenty foot pole, but I'm being facetious. Don't beat me up, don't cancel me, please. It was this chapter when the deceased recited um. When he, she, or they were in the judgment hall of Assar. Whilst their heart was being weighed in the balance against the feather. Symbolic of Maat, right, truth. You know, what we know Maat to mean. From certain paparai, it seems. As if the abo- above words should properly be said by the deceased. When they were being weighed against their own heart. Uh, a conception which is quite different from that of the judgment of the heart before the Neturu. So. That is a very big difference. It's kinda like when you get in trouble and you know you in trouble, like when you was a little kid. And you was in your room and you was sitting there talking to yourself and for two seconds. After you was feeling bad for yourself and busy be and and not being mad and it and you just kinda had that. Kinda moment and you're like, oh crap, I'm really in trouble, I really did do this, oh. That's saying it to yourself, whereas saying it in front of the Neturu is like having to go in front of your parents and and say what you did and you know. Damn, well, I don't know about y'all parents, but I better say the truth in front of my mother. Cause now if I lied, I made it doubly worse, so it's. It's it's interesting that they're like, no, you gotta do it by yourself. And then you gotta say it in front of Assar, all of these judges in front of Jehudi, in front of Emmet. And I don't know about y'all, I don't wanna lie in front of Emmet, cause. And if y'all don't know, Emmet is like part crocodile, part lion, part hippopotamus. Like it, he he is this crazy looking, uh, I don't know if I would say demon. But um, essentially, if your heart wasn't lighter than a feather. He was there to eat your heart, your soul. And so essentially, uh, metaphysically, that was the beginning of your rebirth. And your soul would, you know, kinda go through his innards digest and then he'd poop out a new version of you. To be reborn. I don't know, I made that last part up, don't quote me, but visually it made sense to me. I'm just being silly, don't mind me, but the whole point is he would eat your heart and then you know, you would have to. You know, just do the, do it again, do it again, you ain't learn, do it again, you get left back, you get left back in life. I don't wanna get left back in life. That's that's not a goal. That's not vibes, that's not a mood, don't do it. Could you imagine, like, I'm literally. So the end of the cycle. Is um, in two weeks and I keep telling the, I'm like, maybe you really like me. That's okay, we have fun times here, we learn a lot, but I teach other classes, I need y'all to pass. And and you know, you could come to summer school uh, if you want to. But I'm way more entertaining, not during summer school, so you know, don't, don't do it. Could you imagine getting that speech in life? You got two weeks left, you better get it together. I don't wanna do that. Ninety years old sitting on your deathbed like. You know you're gonna have to do that again after ninety years. Like man, listen, this is why I like to study, this is why I like to hang out on here and 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 um. I'm getting all the little laugh ins, y'all see, y'all say, y'all are such bullies. Just laughing at me. I'm laughing at me, don't mind, don't, don't mind my comments, I I am too sarcastic for my own good sometimes. Um, so the next chapter is called the Amulet of the Scarab, it is on page thirty five. I swear we might finish this book one day. Not today. Not tomorrow. But one day we will finish, so um. Um, as I said, we got the um, ninety years is too long, right? I would be so mad like, yo, why ain't you tell me this at fifty like, but it was in the books, why didn't you read the book? Why didn't you listen to that person? Why didn't you, you know, we said it a million times, like, could you, oh my god. Oh, this is like such a teacher moment. But a life moment at the same time, it's like when your parents was like. I told you. And you just learned the hard way. It's like, so well. Well, maybe you gotta do it again. After ninety years of of BS, maybe you just gonna have to do it again because. You didn't get the message at twenty two, you ain't get the message at thirty two, forty two, fifty two, sixty two. You ain't turning around. So do it again. You gotta go to summer school of life. Anyways, I digress, so we got the um, group over on Facebook. If um, you are on there, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not the biggest fan of Facebook, but I do enjoy going over there to have like a little more. In-depth conversation versus like Instagram or TikTok, so um. Comedic living in the twenty first century, um. We get to share articles, talk about books, talk about um, daily rituals, prayers, like you know, just. Everyday living as a comedic person in the twenty first century, like that's, that's the whole um, point of that group. And that's all I'm gonna say about that, so um. You can find me on YouTube, you can find me on Instagram, you can find me on um, TikTok now, cause that's my newest thing, I love TikTok, it is so addicting. I swear. Don't do it before you go into bed, because before you know it'll be two AM. It is addictive, so um, antihoo, I will see you all next week, uh, six PM Eastern Standard Time. Uh, the book is uh, Egyptian Magic by Wallace Budge. If you have any books in the future that you would like to um, do and read together. Then um, definitely send me a DM, let me know and we can get on here, discuss, talk, chat, laugh. Studying doesn't always have to be snorerific and yes, I made that up, don't judge me. studying doesn't always have to be snorific and yes I made that up don't judge me so I will see y'all I'm glad you're in the groove I'm like if I didn't say it over there welcome and thank you for joining and I hope you post often because some people be posting some interesting things and I'll be like alright that's it be quiet Minyet that's enough alright so have a good week y'all um oh I see you hey sis I'm getting my eye my eyes never had hey alright I'm done have a good night eat well stay well be safe um and I'll see y'all next week give yourself to nature daily keep yourself in nature daily and may tomorrow be as today see y'all next week